Start.
Oh, hey, sorry, I'm running very behind. I need two minutes.
Two minutes, we're gonna start. Thank you. Order. Public Infrastructure, Environment and Sustainability. PIEs, I think that's easier to say. Need a motion to move the minutes.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host.
No.
Okay, he's saying we do. We do?
Yeah, thumbs up.
Can you hear this?
Oh.
Everything should be fine.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you. I got no request to move consent items, so we're gonna go right into discussion. And first up is Dan Bueller. With Centennial Trail to Benbir Connection. Welcome, Dan.
Can I put a picture up here? How would I do that?
Where did you have it saved?
On the desktop.
Okay. You should be able to just minimize that and pull it up and then I can share it into the WebEx so that people not in the room can see it.
Okay, on your screen there is in white the existing Benbir Trail.
Uh, hang on just a sec, I'm sharing it for you. There you go.
There we go. White is existing Benbir Trail, green is existing Centennial Trail. And in blue here is, in blue here is Trent. As you know, this road has been closed for a while as DOT replaces the bridge there. So we have a project of opportunity, there's a longer-term plan to connect Benbir to Centennial Trail in red. We've got an opportunity to be beneath the bridge when there is no bridge. And which case it would be somewhat less expensive than if we did that later. So I have a paper in front of you that is a local agreement with DOT to do that work as a change order to their bridge project.
Questions for Dan? I have two. Are you going to abandon the other portion or will they be?
Yeah, no, the intent is there's ultimately a loop, so.
Okay.
This portion right here was built along with MLK and it was on the brown, the brown area that's in development now, so, no, it would be a whole loop.
Okay, and so then the other piece is where there's a trail that, so instead of going down Sprague, we were gonna go down Pacific from Sherman. So does that connect to this at some point or not?
At some point and in a distant connection, but that's a ways to the west.
Yeah.
And that, that project is coming, just not yet.
Okay, but they're, they're all going to be.
They're all connected, all these connections make for everything to be.
They're gonna talk to each other.
They're gonna talk to each other.
Perfect. All right, good. All right, any other questions? Super, thanks so much, we need a sponsor.
I just wanted to say thanks, it's a long time coming, it's really an exciting connection. It's cool.
I'm sponsoring this, but I'll need a second.
Second.
Okay, so Jonathan Bingle will be second.
I would also like to sponsor.
And Council President will be third. Fine. Next up is Council President for the resolution approving the Feltz Field Airport Layout Plan, you have five minutes.
All right, well, the airport apologizes that they couldn't be here today and I'm on the airport board, so I was deployed with some talking points. They wanted to make it clear that they had offered to provide briefings to individual council members and they have to the ones that requested it. They also wanted to point out that they've circulated the very fat plan that you've already seen, I'm sure you've all read it, page by page. Okay, Councilmember Bingle has, right in his district, so that's awesome. They wanted me to make sure that you knew that there's 462 jobs and $79 million annual economic impact. Occasionally, the federal government, the Federal Aeronautics Administration requires us to update these master plans, that's why we're doing that work. And because the airport is owned both Feltz Field and International by both the city and the county, we, we have to approve that. So the county has already approved the same joint resolution on August 9th. Let's see, what else?
Council President was also briefed at Finance back in June.
Okay, excellent. So the biggest challenges that they identified is having adequate aircraft storage hangar space and they're working on that individually as well as part of the plan. There also needs to be a new air traffic control tower that will improve things and a potential runway extension to add 1,000 feet to make it up to 5,500 feet to accommodate light jets. And they wanted me to emphasize that that will require a separate environmental assessment, so we're not finalizing that, but we're leaving space for that. And then also important is the gateway improvement project to add signage and streetscape and lighting along Fancher between Trent and Rutter. Let's see, they're going to continue renovating and expanding the terminal building. This plan is a pretty high level, so, but it gives the public and anyone that's looking to locate there or operate there an idea of what's gonna happen in the next few years. So that is my presentation. Councilmember Bingle?
Okay, so I did read through the plan and it's pretty detailed. The encouraging stuff about it is that it's, the economic impact is something I didn't realize how, how big it really was, which is super awesome for my district. The expansion of the runway will allow for significantly more traffic for, you know, private businesses and things like that that have private jets to come in. I did have two questions that I wanted to ask them today because in the plan it had raised its own concerns of noise pollution and light pollution. Those were my only questions and I guess I'll just shoot those over to Larry and the board.
Yeah, just if you send it to Larry and just copy me, then I'll know that they got sent, so, and then.
Any other questions?
That'll be coming forward shortly.
Were those your two?
Those are my two, the noise and light, yeah.
Councilman, okay, good, anybody else? We need two sponsors, you're one.
I'm the other.
So we have three sponsors, all right? Great.
It's gonna be a new council rule, you gotta have three sponsors! No, if you have three, you go fast track.
It's just in District One, you know, I just figured, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Next up, Marcia, we're gonna talk about the vulnerability assessment for Yellowstone Pipeline. So for those of you who weren't on council at the time, this was quite a slog to get us to agree on agreement for this pipeline. And we did, thanks to Tim in Legal. And Marcia, you're gonna talk to us about vulnerability, that was one of the concerns that we had was that this pipeline was running over the aquifer, running under the river and so forth, so tell us what you know.
Good afternoon. So this vulnerability assessment, we have an RFQ we're getting ready to release to find an engineering consultant to help us with this analysis. Now Colin Nake, Associate Engineer and Integrated Capital Management, has done all the work on this, so I've invited him to actually tell you what, what we are doing on this RFQ.
Yeah, hi, I'm Colin Nake, Associate Engineer with ICM. And so the, the vulnerability assessment for the Yellowstone Pipeline is a assessment where we will be looking at the pipeline as it runs, you can see it here in black, it runs past two of our well stations, well electric and park water well stations, and then it runs along our, in red and in green here is our wellhead capture zone, so this is just a basic overview of where our wells are pulling water from in the aquifer. So as you can see, the pipeline runs pretty much within that capture zone and it even extends further out as you go towards Idaho along that wellhead capture zone. So the study aims to get a more detailed look at how the aquifer functions in this area. This, this is a basic overview of the capture zones, it doesn't capture what that capture zone looks like when different pumps are running with how, how the system is operated necessarily, it's just a general, this is what we pump out of there, this is what it should theoretically do, but it doesn't have all the detail. Along with that, the, the analysis aims to study the, the chemical makeup of the, the gas pipeline to understand how that, the, the properties of, of the gas would interact with our aquifer and what kind of impacts we could see based off of the aquifer characteristics in the area and how it impacts the, the drinking water at the well. Along with if, in those scenarios, what we would need to do to alter operations in order to provide safe drinking water to the city if, if there were a release and how we would need to move operations around and understand the length of time based off of different release scenarios. So that's kind of the basic overview of what this analysis is looking to accomplish. So any questions, yeah?
Go ahead, Mr. Kafkort.
Yeah, just wondering, what's, what's the cost of the study and are we doing this in partnership with Phillips 76 or 66 or?
Yeah, so the projected cost is around $200,000 and we do have a $75,000 commitment from, from the Yellowstone Pipeline Company contributed towards this study.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Are you assessing other vulnerabilities? So we're talking about the aquifer, but what about access to the public? How are we keeping that pipeline safe? And it, it just seems counterintuitive to me that we're actually looking at where it is and so the public can see where it is too. And it's a critical resource, it's also something that can be quite dangerous. So what are we doing to look at how we can make sure that it stays safe and that it's not accessible to the public?
Sure, for, for this study, I don't know that we're able to capture that entire, so this map doesn't show, the pipeline actually runs up north and, and south of here, so all over the city. So the idea was to look at our water infrastructure where we have critical points where those interact, not necessarily the entire surrounding areas of the pipeline. And then, I don't know if you have anything else to speak to that, Marcia?
No, I don't, exactly what I said. Just what Colin said, that we didn't really take that in consideration of access to their pipe, it is a buried pipe. And yes, you can get access to it, it's not readily available to the public, it is available to city staff, they've shared that, of course, because we have a lot of projects that can be impacted by it. I don't, and I don't think in this area, I mean, our bigger concern is it goes underneath the river. But it is a buried pipe, so it is not something that's come up in any of our analysis, that would be a question we can ask back to the Yellowstone Pipe people to see what they, what their ideas are.
Council President, could you talk about that for a little bit because you worked on litigation on the, the pipe that exploded in Bellingham? It was, so if it's leaking, it's not necessarily, even though it's buried, it's still a risk to the public, that's why I'm asking this.
Well, just my, my concern on ours, there's the leaking explosion kind of risk, but then there is the groundwater risk, especially since it comes so close to our wellheads.
Yeah. And that's what we're focusing on, is the risk to our drinking water. And there's more risks, as you've pointed out, there's more risks, but we're focusing on the risk to our drinking water.
Okay. If possible, if you could bring back any kind of information about the other things we've been talking about, that'd be great.
Yeah, I believe the, the scope also includes the proximity, as far as our infrastructure, the proximity to the park water well station, that, that is included for any sort of, yeah, like an explosion type event for the pipeline, I think, I believe that's included in the scope as well for the, those, the, the water infrastructure that is in close proximity to the pipeline.
Great.
I have a quick.
Go ahead.
So my question, which was my question when we were negotiating, is, is this gonna get into what it's gonna cost to remediate if it is? So I get that it's gonna analyze the risk, but one of the challenges is we're trying to figure out with this company how much money they should have set aside in a catastrophic situation. And they were, seemed to be not ready or able to say, well, if there's a major groundwater contamination, this is the intervention and it's gonna cost this much money and that. So is that at all within the scope of this?
So I think this is the first step to answer that, we need to know, well, what would we have to do, what is the risk? And from there, we can come up with what the cost would be for different scenarios. I'm, and I think we, and I don't remember what's in our scope right off the top of my head, I think that will either be an option of what we have in this depending on what, how the cost comes in. We have $200,000 designated for this and that might be beyond our, our budget. But we can also do it as a, that high-level kind of scoping cost to say this is kind of the magnitude of what we're seeing it would be. And from there, we can do a further analysis, either within staff or within a consultant to see what really would the cost be if there was that, the big catastrophe. Or even a small catastrophe, a small leak could have a big impact to us.
Yeah, so I guess my request is I totally get the high level, I think that, but if we could identify, like, here are the ways that if you really did, let's just say there was a significant leak of petroleum into our major wellhead, what are the interventions that are out there, if they exist? My partial worry was that there isn't. Well, the last time I heard about the tabletop exercise, someone who was on it, they're like, well, you know, it's just going down the river, you know, there's just not a lot that can be done to it. So if that's the case, I'd, I'd wanna know that, but if, you know, all right, if one of our major wells is offline, how do we, is it just offline for a few years and then we let it, or is there a way to chemically treat it or otherwise capture it?
And that's all gonna be considered in this study of what can we do to mitigate it, once we, once we determine how that, the aquifer and the risk to our well, how that will all work together? Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you both, appreciate it. We need two sponsors for this?
Yeah, awesome. I think this was just a presentation.
Okay, I have it, I have it yellowed out, so.
You don't have council, is there something coming forward for council to approve?
There will be the, once we get the RFQ, we'll have, we'll pick a consultant and have a contract that will be coming forward.
But that will come back through committee at that time then? Because it's not in the pack right now?
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Piccolo, we're going to hear from you on Tourism Promotion Area Presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, council. The council was briefed earlier this year about the current TPA, which has been in existence since about 2004. Three-party TPA, the city, Spokane County, Spokane Valley. The Valley took legislative steps to remove themselves from the TPA and that will happen at the end of this year, they'll be removed. So the current TPA will be disestablished by the end of the year. And we fully anticipated that a new TPA petition would be filed and, and one has been filed. It has to come from the private sector, it's not something that the county or the city can file. And so usually the, the sponsors are Vises Spokane, Spokane Regional Sports Commission, those type of entities. So they, they did file their initiative petition to form the new TPA with Spokane County about 10 days ago. They're required to get signatures from businesses that will pay at least 60% of the projected assessments and they came in at about 69%, so that's very encouraging. The initial intent was to have the city, Spokane County, and a check-in with Airway Heights, Liberty Lake, Cheney, to see if they would join as well. We knew Spokane Valley would not, so they were not approached. Airway Heights declined, Liberty Lake has their own TPA, a single-city TPA, and they just wanna stay with that, so they declined. We thought Cheney was gonna join, but it sounds like they are going to pass as well. So there'll be a two-jurisdiction TPA, still a regional joint TPA. The city has about 32 businesses paying in, that would pay in, the county has about five, so obviously we, we knew that those were about the numbers we're, we're dealing with. The proposed membership would be five members on the TPA Commission, two of whom would be ex-official members, one appointed by the city, one appointed by the county, non-voting ex-official. There'd be three voting members, two from the city, one from the county. And those, just like the current TPA, they would be nominated by the Spokane Hotel Motel Association. Those names would be sent forward, the same way it is right now. For the city, it would go to the mayor's office, mayor would review that selection, appoint that person, come back to the council for confirmation. The assessments would, would stay the same, it's a $2 base charge plus a two, two more additional charge, so a total of $4. Again, that's what it is right now. The process is gonna move pretty fast, the county has to deliver all their, the initiative, the ordinance, the interlocal agreement to the state Department of Revenue by, I think about October 10th. So they'll be taking action right after the 1st of September. So we're looking for the city council to agree, to sign off on the interlocal agreement that will be on your agenda on the 13th, there's no meeting on the 6th. So it'll be the following Monday, we'll get that prefiled. And I think the only question that has come up from the county side is if it's just a two-party interlocal agreement, a two-party TPA, should the county be the lead agency on this one? They have five businesses paying in, we have 32. The petition has been filed with the county. My recommendation is to stay with what we have, the same format with the county being the lead agency for a couple of reasons. One is they've been doing this since 2004, their finance department knows what charges are coming in, they know how to forward these, the information to the state, they know how to receive the money, they've been through this process for, for quite a few years now. The other important aspect is, it's my impression that the parties sponsoring the petition, Vises Spokane, Regional Sports Commission, they really want the regional approach to the TPA. And if they file it with the city of Spokane, it looks more like it's a single-city TPA versus the regional TPA approach that they are encouraging because they both are regional entities serving the region, not just the city of Spokane. So at this point, the county will follow the process to put, issue a notice of the hearing that they will conduct with the county commissioners, they will approve their ordinance just, just like they have right now, but they'll prove a new one, they will, they've already sent over the interlocal agreement, we'll get that on the council agenda. And again, right now, it would be the city of Spokane and Spokane County.
Questions? Wow, all right, thank you, and I do need a sponsor for this. All right.
I think the dollar amount is in the area of $3 million just with the city. We're probably, again, you know, we look at the numbers, we're 32 businesses, the county is four or five, so the bulk of the funding will come from the city, but it is 3 million plus annually, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
INGA, we're gonna do impact fee discussion and this will come back to us later as a resolution, so there's no sponsors needed right now. And we've allocated 20 minutes for you.
Can you, can you share, that needs to be shared into the WebEx first, sorry.
Where do I go to do that?
If you just open that window that you were just scrolling? Nope, the WebEx one, just to the right there, just click that. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. So I'm here to talk about impact fees. We, I think I came back in March if I remember right and kinda gave you a preview and it took me some time to, to go through and actually come up with, with rates. So just to give you the brief overview and for anyone else who's listening in, we've had impact fees since 2011. We did an update of all of the districts in 2017, 2019, it took a couple of years. The purpose of the program is to pay for capacity improvements that are needed for development and the fees are paid at the building permit stage. And the money that is generated through this program, we typically use to match grants that the city goes after to fund the projects. This shows you how we calculate the rates, we have a list of projects for each of the districts and we have five districts right now. Then out of our regional travel demand model, I get an estimate of how much growth we're gonna get in each district and that comes in terms of PM peak hour vehicle trips. I put those two numbers into the equation and then multiply them by the developer percentage. And so the, the way this works is we can't charge 100% of the project costs to the development and our, our practice starting out was 40% was developer share and then when we did the 2019 update, we went up to 50% and that's where it stayed since then. So that generates a base fee per PM peak hour trip per district. So this shows you the existing rates and districts, we did add the West Plains with our 2019 update and you'll notice that the airport is excluded from that, so it primarily focuses on the commercial area that surrounds Highway 2. So what we talked about when I came in March was that based on the results of the study, the transportation study that was done for US 195, we identified a very large list of projects and we're recommending that we split out a separate district for the Leittah Valley to focus on those projects. And so the scope of, of what I'm showing you today is making making some minor boundary modifications, just to create that Leita district, and then to update the project list, including the costs, and then subsequently the fees, just for these three districts, for West Plains, Leita, and South. So this was my proposal for the new boundaries. The kind of tannish area there in the middle would be the US-195 district, and all of that was formerly part of South. It basically follows the bluff up above, and then just the rest of the city boundaries, all the way up until this area in Grandview Thorpe. And so, my proposal right now, and this is obviously open for some discussion, is I've kind of split the Grandview Thorpe neighborhood between the Leita district and the West Plains district, and I split it along the Trolley Trail, which is a pathway that runs through the neighborhood, and there's no roads that cross it. And so basically, if you're on the south side of it, you tend to drive out on Thorpe towards 195, or you go out to the west. If you're on the north side of it, you tend to drive out towards Sunset Highway. So I thought that was a good boundary, but there could be some argument to change that up, if there's a desire to do that. The other change I made here is I put this northern part of Vinegar Flats in the South District, so this is the area that's fairly close to downtown, and I think most of the trips there probably tend to go to and from the downtown and not get on 195. And then, there's also an arrow up at the top where it says reassigned government way to downtown. I think at some point, I'd like to look at expanding the downtown boundary, which we're not really doing with this update, but I thought it would be logical to include just that area alongside Government Way and Sunset Highway, where we have that little node that could be developed pretty intensely. Most of the traffic through there, I think, tends to go to and from downtown, plus you've got really good transit, and we'll have the Fish Like Trail going through there eventually. So it makes sense to me to pair it with downtown, but that's also something that we can look into further, if you don't like it. So I'm going to go through and show you the projects for the Leita district, and you've seen all of these before with the US-195 study, but just kind of, what I did is, I pared it down a little bit, it doesn't include every single project from the US-195 study, it's the ones that I think we can reasonably do within 20 years, and the ones that I think are needed for development to be able to move forward. So, this is the Meadow Lane, I think you're probably aware, we did get an SRTC grant for this. We still have a share that the developers are contributing, and it will be a city-led project, so I'm keeping it in here, but just for the amount that the developers are paying. This is the Lyndicki Frontage Road, which would run on the west side of US-195 from Thorpe up to 16th, and this would create the parallel city street that WashDOT is looking for, to take some of the traffic off of 195 on the west side. This one is Inland Empire Way, and this would be creating a two-way roadway, connecting from the Cheney-Spokane interchange to Inland Empire Way. We do have developers that are conditioned to build a one-way, a northbound-only connection there, and so this project would come later and provide that two-way street. And the reason this one is really important is, if STA was ever going to provide transit service down into this corridor, they really want to be running on city streets and not on 195, and they need a two-way street to do that. So this would likely be their route. We also have some non-motorized projects in here. There's really not a lot you can walk to, as far as like walking between your residence and the commercial in this area. I see people walking, trying to walk along the side of Cheney-Spokane Road sometimes, going from Qualchin and from this little subdivision, going up to the Yokes or to the restaurants, and it really needs a sidewalk or something on it. So that's one of the projects. Another one would be to re-stripe Cheney-Spokane Road, it's five lanes, and it really doesn't need to be. We could repurpose some of that space and create a nice shared-use pathway along the side that would connect at both ends and provide a way for people to bike within this community. Another one would be a little offshoot of that pathway, going up the west side of 195 and connecting into the future Leita-Glen development, which was just approved through the Hearing Examiner recently. It would also tie into the existing Moplehome Park that's up there. So another large project that's in here is to do something with the tunnels on Thorpe Road. They're very narrow, they date back to the late, like, early 1900s, they're very old. But the problem with them is that they are narrow enough that you can't get larger vehicles through side by side. And so if you sit out there and watch the traffic during the busy parts of the day, you'll see that drivers in larger trucks or delivery vans tend to yield and wait for the tunnel to be clear before they proceed through. It works fine now, but as growth continues to the west of this, it's going to break down at some point. And so, I did some analysis on it, and found that it has a capacity somewhere between 700 and 1,000 vehicles per hour, which is quite a bit less than a normal two-lane road. So because of this, you'll see that I've added in projects to address both of these tunnels into the impact fee list for Leita. So this is the project list, and just to tell you a little bit more about the tunnels, the long one that goes under the railroad, the BNSF tunnel, that's a 200-foot tunnel, we're assuming we would have to either widen that tunnel, or build a separate bicycle and pedestrian tunnel next to it, and then take the sidewalk out of the existing tunnel to provide the width. The other one, which runs underneath the Fish Like Trail, could be taken out and replaced with a bridge, or something of that nature. So I've got an estimate in here, a planning-level estimate of what I think those will cost, but what I'd like to do is to use some of the money generated through this program to do a more detailed engineering study, and see if we can't find a way to get the cost down on those, because they're pretty much the most expensive projects on the list.
Inga?
Yes.
Question, so are all of these projects mandated by WashDOT for development to continue?
Most of them would be yes.
So there's no, like, not a single one of these could be removed from the list to allow for?
I would say the only ones that could potentially be removed would be the non-motorized ones.
Okay.
The rest of them would be mandated, yes.
And these are specifically mandated by WashDOT? I mean, they told us, you must do these projects in order for development to continue?
Some of them, they haven't got there yet, because the developments haven't all come in for permitting, but at some point, they will be, yes.
So we have to come up with basically 43 million before we can allow for more development up there?
It can, I mean, it can go in phases, right? There's going to be some that can move forward, and some that'll have to wait.
Okay, and then are you going to show us the proposed fee changes?
Yep.
Okay.
So, this is for Leita, and when we talked before, you asked me to come back with a range, so I'm showing you what the rate would be at 50%, 60%, and 70% developer share, which means the city has to come up with the rest of it, which is getting increasingly more difficult for, to get grants for projects like this, unfortunately. So, that's Leita. I do also have an update for West Plains, that I do want to show you the numbers for that one, too. Yes?
Yeah, so have you, I mean, have you talked to the developers out there? Have any of them showed you kind of what their pro formas look like at $10,000 per unit? I'm just wondering, because my guess is, it's going to be pricing out everybody.
It very well could be. I, no, I have not shown this to them yet. The preliminary numbers I gave them a few months ago, I think I mentioned somewhere in the 5,000 to 7,000 range, but then, I, that was before I decided we needed to add the tunnels in, and it's really the tunnels that create the problem.
Wait, so you decided, or did WashDOT decide? That's where I'm trying to get to.
WashDOT will mandate that we do something with the tunnels, because it will back traffic up onto 195.
Okay, and we have to do both tunnels? We can't do one and reroute traffic a little bit?
We could maybe buy some time if we did the one over Fish Like Trail, and that would allow the other one to operate a little bit longer.
Okay.
I just, I'd have to re-study it to see.
All right.
Okay, Council President?
Oh, I just, was that, is that an amount per residential unit, or per trip?
That would be per PM peak trip, so a residential unit is usually 1.1 PM peak trips, so just a little bit higher than what you see.
Great, thanks.
So on the units, it's just basically $1,100 is what this would be per unit to be out there? If it's 1.1?
11,000.
Oh, so it'd be 11,000 per unit. So if we did like 100 units, that's 1.1 million that the developers are paying?
Yep. It is an expensive place to develop.
So, did you have something, Councilmember?
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember, Scranton, did you have something?
No.
Okay.
Just one last thing, is there a plan for kind of an engagement process on this? I mean, this is pretty substantial change, so I'm wondering what that looks like.
So I do need to go take this through Planning Commission before it comes back to you, and so at that point, we would do some outreach.
Okay, so we're still a little ways off?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Inga, when I was talking with Tammy Palmquist, she indicated that she had talked with some of the developers, the ones from out of state did not have a problem with paying for this infrastructure. The folks that are here that have the gasp of, oh my goodness, this is a lot of money. So do you concur on that?
I'd say that's consistent with, just, I've only talked with a couple of out-of-area developers.
And when we look at the price of the homes there, these are not, these are not low-income homes, these are not even affordable, these are not market-rate, these are over-market-rate homes. So we're talking about homes that are being built for probably people that don't currently live in Spokane, shall we say. That's just my guess.
But there's a lot of apartments, too, that are going on up there, and I'm guessing not all of those are luxury apartments.
I'm guessing that they are above market rate.
Maybe.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And so if it's just a single-family home that's going out up there, is it just the 11,000 for that, for that home?
Right, and then apartments are slightly less, so it depends on what type of residence it is.
Gotcha. And for just like a regular market-rate apartment unit, what would that be in comparison to the 11,000?
Gosh, it's usually like 60%, I think, of the single-family rate, something about like that.
Okay.
Yep.
So then, still a lot of money, but for 100 units, it'd be 600,000 as opposed to a million, roughly?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just say, Councilmember Conneer, the residents that have come and spoken to us have said those are not low-income homes, and they did not expect them to be low-income homes, and that they would be above market rate. And I think, I sense a sense of pride out of some of them, that they were at that cost, so it would, it's not a surprise, I don't think, to anyone, what's going in, or the cost. Impact fees, possibly, but not the cost of the homes.
Go ahead.
But, and the last thing I would just add, too, is, I mean, there is a compression effect, we raise the prices on the top, that affects every single person down that ladder. So even at the lowest rung, it's even a little bit less affordable for them as a result of jacking up rates for anywhere along that ladder. Spencer's talked about the compression effect a few times. Is it, I would be very interested in proposing, and in fact, I will probably propose as an amendment when this comes forward, that we collect the fees at the point of CO rather than permit, because I think that that allows for smaller developers to have a better opportunity, and I'd just be curious your thoughts on that.
I know that we have the ability to do a deferral program already under state law, and I want to say that defers it to CO, but people don't usually request it.
Because that was a recommendation of the Infill Task Force in 2016, that the city has never considered, and so I think it'd be an important one to come forward.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd talk to Tammy about that and see.
So, but one thing, don't these have to be, doesn't the infrastructure have to be in place before we can be permitting additional homes?
Usually that is what WashDOT requests, or that it's at least funded and planned within a certain short timeframe.
So if we're going to, somebody's got to finance it to build it, right, so.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else?
I have some more questions, but I'll just shoot you an email and see if we can get together some other time and discuss it, so.
Okay, and I did have more on the West Plains to talk about, too.
Go ahead.
So, okay. So the West Plains, I'm also proposing that we add some projects in here. When we, when we set this up, we were focused more on trying to build out the 12th Avenue, which is the parallel route that goes on the north side of US-2. But now we're starting to see development come in on the south side, in fact, Vandervert is already building a piece of this road that you see up here. And so we really need to get this into the impact fee program as well, so that we have a mechanism to get the rest of it done. So I'm proposing that we add this whole segment of 21st Avenue from Hazelwood to Spotted. I do expect that a pretty good chunk of it is probably going to be done by the developers anyways, but what happens is we give them a credit against their impact fees for building it, and so we do need to have it in the program for that to work well. 12th Avenue, this is the one that's already in there, this would be the road that goes on the north side of the North 40, and helps to create the parallel route there. We're also looking to extend it to the east, and take that parallel route all the way back to, I think, Russell Road, is it? So this would be going by the Polo Fields, and then dropping down into this area that's, it's come in a couple of times already, is an industrial park, and so I think it's probably going to develop out pretty soon. So that would update this list to about 25 million, and the rates would go up in the West Plains, but not as substantially as Leita. I also have South, I didn't show you the details on that, but we did update all of the cost estimates in that area, and so it, to go along with the, just the increase in construction costs that we've seen with inflation, we do need to bump those up as well. So these would be the three rate proposals at the 50, 60, and 70% level. And just for comparison purposes, I did a little research on what other communities in the state are charging. The highest one is Samamish, and then North Bend is not too far behind. But then some of the others in Central Washington, Ellensburg, Richland, Kennewick, Spokane Valley has, for part of the city, they have it. Most of our fees, with the exception of the Leita, are pretty close to that range. And even Post Falls, Hayden, they all charge impact fees as well, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
All right, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I was just going to ask the projects for the West Plains, so are those mandated projects as well, or are those just projects that we've come up with that we're looking at?
Those are ones that came out of several studies that we've done of that area in cooperation with WashDOT and with Airway Heights.
And so, but we're not going to allow development until those get done, or is development allowed to continue without those?
It kind of depends on what conditions WashDOT puts on them.
But we're expecting WashDOT to put conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And they also have water issues, too, just to complicate things. My question is, so assuming we did the 50% in Leita and West Plains, would, that means the city has to come up with the other 50%
Yes.
in order to get that housing going. And, I'm just looking for your perspective on that, it's, you know, so $20 million or so in Leita, like, where would that come from? I know we apply for grants and things like that, but just, your brain tells you something about that. If you could just kind of share that, because the developers' half is just a piece of the puzzle that we have to deal with, and then we have to figure out how to get the money, so.
I think it'd be hard to get through the feds. We were lucky to get Meadow Lane, it was like one of the last ones that got fully funded on the list. Probably would have to be a state legislative ask.
And just, again, just a comment, we have spoken with WashDOT and our legislators, that if we really came up with a good plan for Leita, that they've been open to us seeking extraordinary funds on that, for this whole corridor and the 195 transportation viability and things like that. So, but we're going to need to get going on that.
Anyone else? Okay, well, that's depressing. All right. Inga, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Marlene, we're going to talk about funding to support fluoridation, engineering studies specifically.
So this should be relatively quick. So we did, as you know, got a grant from Arcora to study fluoridation, that Arcora agreed to allow us to use
that Arcora agreed to allow us to use up to $600,000 without repayment for that study. Since then, though, the Department of Health got some money from the legislature for studies of this kind. In our effort to be somewhat of a good partner, since they were willing to step up and forgive that requirement that it be paid back, we did apply for funding. It doesn't change what we're doing. The study's the same. The Department of Health would not require us to complete a fluoridation system to receive the funding. I confirmed with them. So we did send a letter of interest for that grant. We don't know if we would get it. But if it would, it would just basically replace some of the funding that Arcora has given us for that study piece. So nothing changes in the scope of work. It still will come back to City Council and to the mayor to have a discussion on what the next steps would be. So none of that changes. This would just be an attempt to really be a better partner with the funding agency.
Great. Questions? Go ahead.
Well, I would just say, I wouldn't support it. I think that the taxpayer's been pretty clear that this isn't something they want, and we shouldn't shift the burden onto them to do this study. Arcora said they'd pay for it, and I think we should let them continue to pay for it.
Anybody else?
And a somewhat counter to that, we, if we go forward with fluoridation, we've got money from Arcora, but every dollar that gets spent from someplace else is more just to help us with our system. So I think it saves local taxpayer money going this direction.
How much were we, are we seeking from the state to replace in Arcora's spending?
Well, it really depends on where we are at that point, where funding would be available, council member, because they won't pay for work that's already occurred. So at this point, we think we'd be at least 40% done with the study before any funding could be available, perhaps more depending on how long their process takes. So it's a $600,000 study, so we're talking in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand, possibly. So, and they did, the Department of Health did encourage us to go ahead and use, you know, apply for the funding, because they didn't have many other takers at this point. So it was money that the legislature had specifically intended just for that purpose.
And do we know how much the state set aside for that?
It was a half a million dollars.
A half a million dollars, okay.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
So just to clarify again, the legislature set aside specifically for fluoridation statewide?
Yeah, for fluoridation studies within the state.
Okay, so if we don't take it, someone else might.
Someone else could, you know, if they apply. And when I had talked to them, no one else had shown interest at that point, so that money was sitting there. So they encouraged us to go ahead and make that application. But it would be for a small amount, only because we're well along in our study process, and it won't pay for any retro work.
Yeah. I'll be honest, it feels like a pretty specific amount of money. It kind of feels like the state did this with Spokane in mind. That's just initial thoughts and feels, that it feels as if they were trying to help along our study, so.
Anybody else? Marlene, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I want to shout out the people who are doing the study. I've been on a couple of the visits, and they're doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate what they're doing, so, yeah.
Mr. Harris, welcome. You're going to talk about micro-surfacing, the projects that we're doing right now.
All right, good afternoon, council. We did want to get in front, just to give an update on how the work progressed this year. So do a little background, just to get everybody kind of in the, focused on what we're doing. So pavement management falls within the street department, and the intent is to do the maintenance, rehab, and preservation of our paved street assets. We like to use the tools and methods that assist to evaluate and maintain the pavements with the overall objective to keep the street surface in a serviceable condition over a period of time. So to do that, we've got our asset inventory, which is our arterial and local access streets. And to better maintain that information, last year, as you recall, we did a project to gather the information using a company that gathers that information in one project. Basically, it's done in a week. And they did our local, or I'm sorry, our arterial streets last year. This year, they did our local access streets. And that provides a better baseline for the information. Instead of spreading out the gathering over a number, I think three years is what it took us, now we can gather that information in one year, reoccurring, and that helps to keep the information more current. As most of you may have seen before in our presentations, these are some of the common defects that we have on the streets. We've got in the top left, alligator cracking, which looks like the back of an alligator. We've got normal surface cracks. In the middle picture, there's lots of patching, lots of utility cuts across the city, as most of you might recognize. One of the other common defects that we have is rutting. And then the last one is ravelling. So what we're trying to do is identify the right maintenance needs for what the defects are and for that street. So in the chart there, in PCI rating, which is what we get from these assessments that are done, the streets are rated from 100 down to zero. With what we're striving for, if you see on the bell curve there, we're striving to get the maximum life, so 15, 20 years, maybe even 30 years out of the pavement. And the only way that you can really do that is to use the right surface treatments to extend that out, which is what we do to our own homes and cars and other assets that we own. So the purpose of the asset management tools provides that. And that's what we're trying to do in the street department. And just to use some analogies to help people relate, it's similar to maintaining our house. So the cracked ceiling is similar to caulking. The chip and micro-surfacing is similar to painting. Overlays are more like replacing a roof, and then a rebuild would be tearing the top off the house and rebuilding it. And the cost escalates for each one, of course. These are some of the processes that we use and some prices. I won't get too detailed with the cracked ceiling. Everyone's seen that out on the streets, and very cheap. One of the common communication problems we have is, as we talk to residents about doing this work in the neighborhoods, many times they think that we're being cheap in their neighborhood, where, in fact, we really aren't. We're just trying to do the right maintenance, but it comes across that way. But cracked ceiling's one of the more effective things we can do, because what we're striving to do is keep the moisture out. The moisture is probably the single thing that's most detrimental to our streets. Fog seals and other treatment that we use from time to time, it's very effective. It helps to rejuvenate the pavement, and it's quick and easy to put on. We've got chip seals, which is really in the surface preservation. This would be comparable to the micro-surfacing that we just did. That's around $15 to $25 a square yard to do a project like that. The slurry seal, the micro-surfacing that we just did on the streets around the city, the cost here, we have it around $6 to $9 a square yard. On the arterial streets, we were able to do it for right around $6 a square yard, all in. The local access streets came in quite a bit cheaper. And then we've got skin patching that we do from time to time. There's a right time and a right place to do that. And then the last one, of course, is grind and overlay, which is more what people are familiar with. And this is what everyone would like to see on their streets, because it rides a lot better. That's about $30 a square yard for the street teams to complete that work. So there's quite a different delta in the difference between the costs. But now we can talk about micro overlays. So this year, well, council, recall, in 2019, we did three micro projects across the city, two arterial streets, which was right around four miles of work that was, I think, for a cost around $200,000. The projects didn't perform as we had expected them to perform. They had mixed results. They sealed the cracks really well, but the surfaces didn't hold up real well. And no one really had a strong idea. It could be studded snow tires. The contractor, you know, didn't, they couldn't clearly identify what had happened. So we did get some benefit out, but it wasn't the performance that we were really hoping for. And we have these similar challenges, whether we do chip seal or some of the other projects. You know, there's just, at times, sometimes the projects don't last like we were expecting. And so it's an ongoing process to continue to seek out what's going on.
Is this like related to some of the heat issues that we've seen with the asphalt melting in the 100-degree?
Yeah.
Is there, I'd be curious, is there any sort of a, I mean, something that we could do to the roads that would prevent that from happening, or a slightly different material that we could use?
Possibly. We did, you know, as a stopgap, tried to cool the streets down, but, you know, it was just not effective. And at the same time, we were having challenges, the county was also having similar challenges. So it wasn't just isolated to work that we had done, but something to consider. So this is not a very good picture there, but this was the location of the projects we did across the city. This is local access as well as the arterials. And you can see the bright colors were the arterial streets. So we did Maple, Ash, and Bernard. This year, so the Type 2 local access streets, we did about 7.2 lane miles, and that cost was right around $190,000. And Type 3 on the arterials, which was something new, we tried in an effort to do some improvement. And that was right around five and a half miles, and that cost was right around $264,000. So overall, we did 12.7 miles across the city for $450,000, which is quite a value. Normally, you know, we would be looking at a significant more amount if we were doing a grind and overlay. So it's, as we have already done these projects about three weeks ago, we've already found some ideas for improvement if we were to do these in the future. But we have no other tools that are really like this that help us to keep the streets sealed like that. So, any questions?
So Clint, how many times, using your roof analogy, how many times do you repair that the repair starts to become ineffective and does not have a longer life?
Well, that's what we would use the PCI information to inform. So we have a point in the PCI number that we have, that 100 to 0 number, where it would not be effective, or money that we would want to spend on a street, we would rather go after a rebuild. That's the way that tool works. It helps inform what work we should be doing.
Well, I'm sure you hear from our neighborhoods that all their roads are bad. But actually, overall, they're in fairly, most of them are in fairly good condition.
I have to say, 14th, West 14th right now is looking good, and people are happy about it.
Yes, they are. Go ahead, Mr. Bingel.
We're not going to call out streets. Go ahead.
So, speaking of this, first off, thank you to you and your team. We came down and we got a little bit of an education on what your department does, and I really appreciate that. So with what we've learned through this process this year, is this still an effective tool for us to be using going forward?
With what we see so far, it is.
Okay. And I was actually really impressed, as you were telling me about the software that we have now that helps us to really grade the streets and understand where they're at from a maintenance perspective. And so could you just give us a quick, like, rundown of how that works? Because I think it's fascinating. I think it's fantastic.
So the way the assessments are done, the vehicle drives through the city streets, and it has cameras, and it has instruments that detect vibration in the vehicle. And so it records it all, and after they record it all, then they overlay it with the GIS maps. And that way, it gives us the right locations, and it records the defects that are in the streets, so it's very accurate.
So instead of needing dozens of interns out there, you know, a hand, it just, you drive past it and you know it?
Yeah, prior to the tool, we used interns to do it. And it would take over three years to gather the arterial or the residential information, local access streets. And the other thing that, using this tool, it's not only more consistent, but it's a lot safer as well, so that you aren't putting people out exposed to the traffic.
Go ahead.
Is that included in our public GIS display? Can anybody in the community kind of see those results?
No, that's in the pavement management information. I don't think it's forward to the public to access.
Okay.
Any other questions? House President, nothing? All right, good. Mr. Harris, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And great job. Thank your crew for us as well, please.
Will do.
And everybody loves West 14th. I heard it today in the elevator, so yay. All right, we have one item left. Like to get this done in 10 minutes. It might take 15. You're going to launch it.
All right, we were going to invite Pam up and anyone else that you want. I'm only going to tee it up slightly, because you're much more knowledgeable than I am on that, but...
You notice she's still sitting in her seat?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have had several emails of asking us to be strategic in our funding that we have control of at council, because there are two projects competing for the 9% tax credit, if I understand correctly, and our region only gets one per year these days typically. And, but there's some understanding from people that have been explained to me that the Housing Authority project could also be eligible for a 4%, and nobody else is eligible for the 4%. And so what I'm hoping today is that if you could just kind of explain the situation and what people are thinking. We have heard from our CHHS staff that they want to, of course, make sure that we follow all of our federal regulations and things like that, which I, of course, concur with. But if there's a way to get that process on track fast enough so that we can deal with the county's upcoming deadline on the 9%, we're all ears. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So my name is Pam Parr, and I'm the Executive Director of the Spokane Housing Authority. The Spokane Housing Authority is a form of municipal government. We are a government entity. Council appoints two of our seven board members as those rotate out. The Housing Authority actually has access to bond cap, so we can issue our own bonds similarly to the way the city does. There are two kinds of low-income housing tax credits. There are 9% low-income housing tax credits, and there are 4% low-income housing tax credits. 9% low-income housing tax credits are very competitive. They generate a lot more equity, private equity, in an affordable housing project than a 4%. To access 4% low-income housing tax credits, you have to issue tax-exempt bonds, which is a form of debt, and it has to equal at least 50% of the project's cost. So basically, you're borrowing money. The Housing Authority has a set, Housing Authorities in the state of Washington have a set-aside in the bond cap for the whole state, which means that we can access that bond cap when others cannot, because we have this 8% set-aside in the bond cap. It's still somewhat competitive, but Housing Authorities across the state have learned to play nice, and we take turns. Spokane has not had a 4% deal in a while. It's our turn. So we can access 4% tax credits and issue tax-exempt bonds to do this project. The problem is that because it generates significantly less private equity in the investment of the low-income housing tax credits, it leaves a huge gap in the funding for the total development cost of the project. If we move forward with Haifumi N., which is the name of the project, using 9% tax credits, we will be able to do the project, and frankly, it's probably easier for us to do it that way. But then we would get one project of 86 units developed in the round, and the other projects would not move forward. If we are able to fill the gap in the funding... If we are able to fill the gap in the funding, do a 4% application, issue tax exempt bonds, we can get our 86 units built and another project of, of about the same number of units could also get built, which means we double the amount that we're able to do in the same timeframe. The gap, the gap is not a small number, it's $9.7 million. Even with the Housing Authority putting some money into the project from units that we've sold recently, it's still a $9.7 million gap. It's not a small ask. We believe that the city can choose to allocate funds directly to us as a government entity without having to go through a competitive funding round. It's a cooperative agreement and interlocal agreement to do so. It would result in twice the number of units being built in the same amount of time.
Have you heard concerns from CHHS about doing that, what their concerns are? And can you address them?
Uh, no. We have had some, some preliminary conversations with both the county and with Community Housing and Human Services about the ability to fill the gap. I don't, I don't know from the city's perspective, and I would imagine you'll have to have your own council give a legal opinion, we can contract with other government agencies without competitive rounds, so I don't know why you couldn't. We do it all the time.
And I see John Hall is actually here, so I don't know, John, if you want to come down and?
Yeah, John and I have been passing in the night, just basically have appointments that have not come together and so we'll continue to try to do that.
So stay close and we'll just let John share his perspective.
Hello. Hello. Hello, City Council members, Vice President Kinnear, President Beggs, and all council members and neighbors. So yes, Ms. Parr is correct. So we've missed a couple of meetings and we're scheduled for this Thursday to have our introductory meeting. But as far as your question on whether instrumentalities, which is the Public Housing Agency, can, can do contracts on MOUs or MOAs, that, I think that's up to the, the city attorney. In most locales that I've been in, we've had to treat them as separate because they are instrumentalities of the government, meaning they have their own separate procurement process and not part of the city's process. That's just been my experience in other locales. And so as far as this particular scenario that's being presented, last week, staff and I did participate with the county as well as Ms. Parr and I think a member of SLIC, I'm forgetting his name at the moment.
Ben.
Ben, Ben Stuckert, yeah, that's right. So we had a, a meeting and as I understand, that meeting took place over, this was like the second or third year, because the county and the city reviews projects to see where, where the support will come from, since there's only one project that can come out of this metropolitan area. And so during that discussion, the county was, was very strong supportive of the Haifumi Inn project. They said it checked all their boxes for the 9% tax credits. And so the, the groups kind of basically said they would support the, the 9% tax credit for Haifumi Inn and that when Mr. Stuckert proposed that the city could use some of its resources to leverage 4% tax credits for the Housing Authority's project, my, my initial response was simply, you know, I, I would never recommend to our superiors to use our entire allocation of our entitlement grants to one project, not, you know, not her project in particular, but just in general. There are certain underwriting guidelines that we have to follow with the Home Investment Partnership Program. We want to ensure the subsidy layering is there, but there are some other thresholds that have to be met to ensure that we are not susceptible to any program monitoring findings that could result in the city having to pay back from its general fund, the amount that we've, we've loaned or given, given away.
Mr. Cathcart.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm just wondering, how much is in the home fund? That's my first question. And then up to what percentage of that do you think is advisable that we can spend?
Yeah. Bear with me here, my, my eyes changed on me when I moved here and so I now have to use reading glasses as well as have my contacts in, so sometimes I can't see. So the, the amount of home dollars that exists currently, we have two years' worth of allocation, so we have 1.4 each year that we get. So 2.8 million is available out of our home entitlement grant. We do take 10% for program administration off the top. There is also 6 million of home through the CARES Act that has not been allocated simply because the city and the county are working in collaboration to do the outreach that's going to be, and community engagement that's necessary, so that the city can then submit a substantial amendment to its consolidated plan to show exactly how the funds will be used. So that process, for whatever reason, has not been completed to date.
So I assume that, that those dollars would not be accessible for, for these, either of these projects?
Not currently, not currently.
So is there a plan for the other eight million?
The, the six million?
No, I'm sorry, you said we had 2.4 that we could spend.
Oh, 2.8. So that's available today for, for projects.
Right, but, but they're asking for 9.8. So I'm wondering the delta, do we, is there an idea on that delta that anybody's come up with?
I, I think the, some potential sources that are, are looking at 1406 and 1590 for like the, the remainder, like 5.8.
And that?
Oh, I was just going to say, in terms of the timeline, how much time do we need to do the outreach to free up the $6 million?
Unfortunately, I don't know that answer today because the staff that gave me that information was unaware of where they were with the county, but it's a joint outreach. But I, I will get that information this afternoon.
And does the county have some of that money or is that, so it's more, so the county might have some of that ARPA home money too? Or is that six include both?
Yes. No, it does not include both. So the county does have, it looks like roughly 4.5 million.
Okay.
So my question is, we keep talking about a deadline. Is there a deadline that this have to be submitted and who does the submit team for the 9%?
So the deadline is really around the application deadline for the housing trust funds, because if, if the project goes one way, it needs housing trust funds. If it goes the other way, it does not. Those applications are due September 8th, so we really need a decision by the end of August as to whether or not we can, can move forward.
So I've been confused on clarity, who actually gets to vote on who gets the 9% or who really makes that decision, since there's only one. It spoke to the city and the county are in this together. Where, where does that final decision lie in this letter or application going forward?
The, the letter is actually generated by the county, Community Development Department, but it is written after a collaboration with the city moving forward.
So this project, this had gone before the CHHS Board and had already been evaluated. And what they brought back to us was not what we're seeing here. So I've been asking, where does the CHHS Board and the continuum of care come in, since those decisions have been made by them, that group, and then council just approves that? So that's already come to us, a meeting ago, two meetings in the last couple of months. So I'm kind of confused as to where this last minute.
So this project did submit an application in that funding round and was not awarded any funding. Partially, I would guess because of the huge amount that it is, it would have taken the entire allocation and CHHS Board chose to move forward with several other projects, which are also very important projects in the pipeline. Here's the thing, all of us developers of affordable housing got together, listed out the entire pipeline and came to an agreement about how we could collaborate together to produce the most units. We're in a crisis situation as far as affordable housing goes. You know, we have 350 people with housing choice vouchers out there looking for places to rent and they cannot find any. Vouchers do nobody any good at this point because nobody can use them. It's really frustrating. So even if we have rental assistance, we don't have the units to support the rental assistance, there just aren't any out there.
I have a question for you, Councilmember Wilkerson or Pam. So when you're mentioning the thing that came to CHHS, that was the 1590 and ARPA money for gap funding, or had they actually considered which one they think would be best for 4% or 9%? Have they been asked that question yet?
We didn't, I did not hear the distinction between the 9% and the 4%.
Okay. Because that's, I think, my question is if we could hear from the CHHS Board maybe on an expedited process, if they're endorsing this idea of two for one, and then if the city council, based on that recommendation, made a resolution and told the county, this is the city's position, if that would, if we could do it by next Monday, is the question, would that potentially influence the county?
Potentially. I also, I also have to believe that we could theoretically make an ask of the county and see if they wanted to contribute to the 9.7 million. They also have money that they have to obligate and at this point, I'm not sure they know exactly where to put it. So I think we could make an ask that they contribute to the 9.7 million moving forward. The cool thing about this particular project is, is, is that it's an existing site. We bought the property next to it. It's not a great site, I will tell you that. It's not one of our nicer properties. We want to redevelop the site, double the number of units. If we do this and we opt out of the existing hep contract, we get 41 tenant protection vouchers, which are new housing choice voucher rental assistance for our community and we will have those forever. It's really hard to get those new vouchers. And the existing contract, which is about 205,000 that comes from HUD to help support the operations of the building, can be transferred to another affordable housing project that really desperately needs it. So we keep that 200,000 in our community as well. It's kind of, you know, it's a win all the way around because we produce these units, we get these vouchers, we transfer the existing rental assistance, and if we can do it as a 9% deal, then we can also build that many more units.
So before Jonathan, before Mr. Bingo, next steps. What do you see as next steps going forward? You said you had a deadline. What do you need to have happen?
I need, I need to know whether or not the city can contribute to filling that 9.7 million dollar gap so that I can make a decision to move forward one way or the other.
Okay. And what is your drop dead, deadline for that answer? Don't say yesterday.
No. It, it would be, I want to say it's the 29th of August.
But that's your deadline? What's your deadline?
We have to have a commitment for the housing trust fund application, yes or no, by September 5th, which is a holiday, so the 6th.
So you need to know from the city by the 6th.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so there's no question that we need the units, there's no question that we need affordable housing units. I guess as I've been speaking with, with staff and other members, some of my questions just come in the, in the competitive process, because what I hear people saying is we got together and divvied up the money, which I think could be going against the spirit of a competitive process, because I, I thought that's what, you know, you had just mentioned was that we got together and basically said, okay, you'll take these dollars, we'll take these dollars.
No, no, what we did is we put together the pipeline and looked at the sources that were available or, or eligible for each project and said, well, this could work for this or this could work for that. We did not allocate the dollars specifically, no.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing, the other thing is, is that if we don't do this project as a 4% deal, we're leaving about $10 million in money leveraged on the table, because it will generate about $10 million in private investment, plus $6.5 million that the Housing Authority will borrow and then pay back.
What are the other funding sources? Sorry?
So wait, did, hold on. Did you get your questions answered?
I, I think, I think I have a couple others, because again, it's just, this is, again, this has just come at us so fast. And one of the concerns that I've heard is that if we don't keep in line with the eligibility requirements, one of the things that can happen to us is that if HUD puts us on a watch list, which is something that could happen, if we get monitored, then what can happen is that we, as a city, can actually have to repay those loans and it would have to come from the general fund. And so that's one of my big concerns right now is just making sure, because we don't, we don't have a ton of money to, to be spending on, on much of anything, especially from the general fund. And so trying to make sure that, and, and for me, the, my, my greatest hesitation right now is not anything more than I just need to be sure as a council member to vote on anything that this is not something that we're actually going to be hurting ourselves down the road. And at, at this point, I mean, after just a couple of days' worth of discussion, I'm, I, I mean, again, love the idea of getting more affordable housing, hate the idea that we could potentially be on the hook for tens of millions of dollars out of the general fund. So I just, I, I need, I need more clarity on, on, on some things before we move forward.
Yeah, I absolutely think you would need council's opinion on it. If it were me, I, I would ask for the same.
Totally.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cathcart.
Well, I was just asking, who, who else is helping to fund the project?
So there's Seller Financing, which is the Housing Authority. Housing Trust Fund dollars, when we apply for them. There's a little bit of cash flow from operations that you use during the course of construction, because it's an existing project. There would be some deferred developer fee and then there's low income housing tax credit equity. We have to make up the 9.7 if it's a 4% deal and so that's to be determined where that is coming from.
Let's have one more question and we're gonna, for your.
I don't even know how to ask this, so bear with me. So what does, what does this have to do with HUD and how could, how could this get us in trouble with HUD? And how could they tell us we'd have to pay the money back? That's where I'm curious.
So one of the proposed sources is to use our Home Investment Partnership entitlement dollars. So with that is a, our Title 24 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 92. And so I printed an excerpt, there's a 20-page excerpt on underwriting and subsidy layering that we have to follow as staff. And so, and Councilmember Cathcart, I didn't answer your question about what percentage. So, and I really can't, because each project is different and we have to follow these 20 sheets of paper as, for each project to come up with what we can fund on a particular project. So we generally have in, in our departments across the country and housing departments, we have a home specialist that, that is certified by HUD to actually know these underwriting criteria. So for each project that comes before us, we are expected to follow these regulations. And so that is, if we don't, or if we, if we, if we partially do, or, you know, if we have any errors, HUD comes and they will monitor projects every few years. If they identify that we did not follow the regulations, that's where they could cite us and say, you have to repay money from your general fund. It is always from, any other entitlement grants, home, CDBG, ESG, it's always from your general fund.
So Pam's shaking her head, yeah, and then as you?
So I'm not disagreeing with him, but in this particular case, because there's low income housing tax credits and because there's project based Section 8, the Washington State Housing Finance Commission actually completes the subsidy layering review. They won't give us the credits until they do the review.
Okay. And then my other question related to that is if we didn't use those dollars and we used 1590 and 1406 or other money, we wouldn't have to worry about, that's just if we use home dollars, right?
If you use local dollars, I'm not sure of the GEO codes just yet, but I'm assuming those are local dollars. Local funds are not subject to federal. But the, the low income housing tax credits are from Treasury, so that's still federal regulations, but not our HUD, that would be Section 42 regs. But the state would, would monitor for that, the project itself.
Perfect, thank you.
Pam, I think you said something that seemed important to me, but I just want to confirm. I think what you said is that we would not be expending any money until the state had signed off that it was all appropriate, is that?
Yeah, you don't close any of your financing until you have the subsidy layering review completed and signed by HUD.
Right. So that minimizes the risk that we would be, have extended and owe it back, because if there was a problem, they would say, no, this is done.
Yes.
So for us to go forward, that doesn't put us at risk, it's just that the project could be at risk if it gets?
Yeah, because you sign all of the documents for financing at the same time and, and it's a stack that you wouldn't believe, yeah.
I just got one, servant on the CHHS and I understand it all, my concern would be we have a structure in our organization that reviews this, makes recommendations come before us, and I think to disregard their recommendation, we need to take that under consideration and have a special meeting, if one can be called, to have them weigh in on this at that point in time. I would like to hear from that committee, what their recommendation would be going forward at this time.
Because just to be clear, we're not disregarding them, they just haven't been asked yet.
They, they have not been.
Yeah, so.
They, they have not been asked, and really, what role do they all play in this? Because this has been a little convoluted to me, so...
Yeah, and, because the last time we, we met with the CHHS board, the Haifumi Inn did not, they, was one that they chose not to fund.
That was a different criteria.
Correct, for, for whatever reason, but it's just still something that I think we'd like to hear from our...
So what do you want next steps to be? That's my question for you.
CHHS board meeting.
So it'll have to be an emergency CHHS board meeting. So, Mr. Hall, do you, can you convene that? Can you organize that? Can you...
Yes, I can do my best to organize it. We were trying to have an emergency meeting this week with them, simply because we needed to review the service provider for the trench shelter, and there were vacations, and we couldn't make it happen this week. So I will continue to try to get...
But keep in mind that we do not have a meeting on Labor Day. So next week is the last chance.
Okay.
I have one last question. Okay, so the city does nothing, whatever has happened. So we can't get our act together to come forward one way or the other in support or not support this? What happens? There's still the county piece over there. What would, what are the options? Worst-case scenario, what would be the outcome?
The Housing Authority will go into the 9% tax credit round and forego the 4%.
And so then there's just the one project, the 9%, and nothing else out there?
The other projects would not be fully funded and therefore would be dead in the water.
And what are the other projects? Can you name a few? I don't know.
So, so there's a component for a new Catholic Charities project.
What's the name?
Salish Haven.
Salish Haven, and then Volunteers of America has a new crosswalk shelter on its proposal, and it would include some permanent supportive housing units for 18 to 24-year-olds. So, how many units fund, 20?
20, 40 total.
40 total, 20 for this particular funding.
Okay. Okay.
And just sorry, one more quick clarification, last one. Okay. So I've heard a couple 4%s. Okay, one is 4% bonding, another 4% li-tac credit. Are those different things, or are those the same thing?
So to access 4% low-income housing tax credits, you have to issue tax-exempt bonds. And, and it has to be 50% of the project cost in debt. So that bond is debt. It's a loan that you have to repay. You can't access 4% credits unless you issue tax-exempt bonds.
And those bonds, are those bonds able to be taken out at any time? There's no deadline? Those are just bonds that the Housing Authority can take out on its own?
Correct, and usually what happens is it's structured as debt. You have to meet a certain debt coverage ratio, and those get paid back annually in payments.
So the 4% then, bonds, to access the 4% li-tac credits, you can do those at a different time, and we don't have the deadline of the, of the September 8th?
No, we still have to make a decision, because we have to pursue one way or the other by the housing trust fund deadline. If we're gonna do 9% tax credits, we have to apply for housing trust funds.
Right, right. I'm just trying to figure out is if we can still accomplish the goal without that September 8th deadline?
He's going the 4%.
Going the 4% route?
Yes, going the 4% route. Would it still be possible for, the ask is to take the 9% and not fund the Housing Authority project, but instead to do the Salish Haven with the, with the crosswalk, and then later readdress the 4% for the housing, for the Haifumi Inn?
Theoretically, you could do that, but the Housing Authority is not going to miss the, the funding deadlines for the 9% round, and you can only get one project, so...
Right.
So that was five questions, not one?
What if I never stopped breathing, and I was just talking the whole time?
Do you ever come up for air, is the question?
I mean, if we go after the 9% credits, and we can still figure out how to do it 4% along the way, that, that'd be fantastic, and, and the 9% tax credit applications are due in November. So theoretically, we still have time to pull it out of the hopper, but we'll see.
The best-case scenarios for Mr. Hall to convene a meeting, CHHS, drag them by their hair if need be, get the meeting done, come to some sort of determination and agreement, so that we can move forward with the best possible solution for getting two projects, not one? That would be my final word. Thank you, Pam, very much. Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And we will be adjourned. We'll see you back here at 3:30, and Council President will be in charge.